Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the September tenth, two thousand and eighteen, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plourd?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Here.
And Mayor Campana?
Here.
Now we come to the agenda, we would need someone to make a motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the agenda be approved.
Commissioner Frazier, would we need a second?
Go ahead.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, that carries seven zero. Announcements. I would like to speak on the current openings that we have on our different committees and boards in the city. As you may well know, the city has twenty boards, committees, and authorities that are made up of resident volunteers. These committees exist to study and advise the city on areas of concern within the city. Couple such boards are the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Harbor Advisory Committee, both of which have four openings. We are regularly looking for residents who are willing to volunteer a few hours each month to help make Marquette a better place by serving on these committees. It's an opportunity to do something productive, meet some interesting people, and again, to help shape Marquette. Currently, we have eight committees, and on that, between those eight committees, there are eighteen openings. If you'd like to step up and help, please contact any of the commissioners, call the city manager's office, or go online. We depend upon our residents to fill these positions and to help out. You make a big difference by serving on these committees, and you will enjoy it. Next, we come to boards and committees. Tonight, we have one appointment, that is Richard Robinson to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending two fifteen twenty-one. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Plourd?
Your Honor, I move that we appoint Richard Robinson to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending two fifteen twenty-one.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'll second the motion.
Comments, any? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, that carries seven zero. Next, we come to our first public comment of the evening. Public comment is when residents may address the commission on whatever they wish to discuss, or they may reserve time to speak on, tonight we have one new business item, we also have a public hearing. So if you wish to talk to either of those items, tell us now. I'm going to open public comment. We need you at the front podium. You've got three minutes, we would like to have your name and local address. At this time, would anybody like to address the commission?
Good evening. I'm George Hyde, I'm here with Derek Swajonin, my partner, and Barry Poleson.
George, address, please.
I'm sorry, eight fifty-five Foxtail Court, Marquette.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to reserve some time for addressing our agenda item later on in the meeting. Item six. Thank you.
Sue Alene, seventeen ten Fitch Avenue. I'd like to reserve some time for proposed ordinance six, what is it? Six-six-nine, fireworks issue.
Sue, that's on the consent agenda, we don't discuss it at this meeting.
Really?
Right, we will discuss it at the next meeting, when it comes up for a public hearing. At that point, you can address it. You can, at this point, give us a three minutes. You've got three minutes, tell us whatever you want to tell us, yeah.
Yeah, I will.
Why don't we just do that? And you can come back next week and tell it again, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I was, I was, I read your article, or not your article, the Mining Journal article, and I was kinda confused on the wording. Unfortunately, Mary Beth couldn't be here tonight, so I decided I'd speak for us, but what, what we're looking at, and this is only from the Mining Journal, nothing that I've heard otherwise, the wording is fine, except, what we're concerned about is the debris falling into other people's property, and we didn't see anything that addressed that issue. And I would hate to see a proposal go through and not have that strong wording in there, because that's the issue, is the fireworks, the debris of the fireworks are landing on our roofs in our yards, and it's going, it's going to cause a fire hazard one of these days. So, that's, that's my issue, so, thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps if you stick around to the end, when we have Commissioner comments, we can speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Barry Poleson, architect for Hyde and Swajonin, I'm one zero one North Lakeshore Boulevard, and I'm here to reserve some time for number six. Thank you.
Frank Jeff Verito, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. August twenty-seventh, we witnessed the most immature behavior in twenty years. At one hour thirty-six minutes and forty-three seconds, Mr. Plourd stated, "First of all, Mr. Verito, I just want to remind you of something you already know but choose not to bring up. It was Mr. Campana's idea to re-add second public comment, to give people more of an opportunity to speak," end quote. That is preposterous. November twenty-five, two thousand and fifteen, item ten, read, "The motion to approve the rules of procedure as provided, including amendment to add a second public comment." It passed six to one, with Mr. Campana, the lone nay vote. Most noticeable was Mr. Campana's choice not to correct Mr. Plourd's error, so to ride along with his compliment, which the record proves bogus. Mr. Plourd further stated, "By the way, at the last meeting, you had twelve minutes, and this meeting, you had twelve minutes. Six tonight. That's really more than even commissioners get. Actually, the times were ten minutes and ten and one-half minutes. Still plenty. I never complained about the time, except for the one year Mr. Campana helped steal closing comment from us." Mr. Plourd went over the top when he continued, "On public record, mind you. By the way, you can also go to the bathroom before public comment, you don't need to dance around like that. I can assure you that the ex-mayor is not in the bathroom, so take your time, relax, make yourself comfortable," end quote. There is the difference between job-related attack and personal attack. Mr. Plourd had run out of intelligible sounding replies. I just accused him of concocting cute responses by omitting prior testimony. That's called lying by omission. I'd mentioned his illogical misstatements of August thirteenth, the debate over whether the public received a fair chance to comment on Hartwood, and his failure to mention the concerns people raised with him, as he once told us he would. I asked Mr. Plourd what he's here to accomplish, so long as he asked me twice, and I promptly replied twice. Rather than tell us, he launched his bathroom tirade, which I, and I didn't even need to go. I was seated in a chair, not dancing around, as he had the TV audience believing. He'd best tell us how his inappropriate remarks relate to the public comments. You see, by diverting the public's attention to the bathroom, Mr. Plourd took emphasis off his failures. Even more foolish was his August twenty-seventh offer to debate another man anytime, anywhere. He wouldn't dare lend me that offer, not on anything we've ever bantered over. I have dared him, like the rest of this board, to dissect the record, word for word. I've offered to resign from this lecture multiple times, but our members realize their words will be shaken out like dirty rugs. The public is urged to account for Mr. Plourd's antics before voting in November. Warn your friends. What's amazing is that Mr. Campana lets him run his mouth like that, with no backbone or wherewithal. To hide Mr. Plourd's mistruth, further expressed his lack of integrity."
Would anyone else care to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment, we're going to move to the presentations of the evening. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first presentation is the U.P. Children's Museum Guardian of the Corridor, Kishan Plaw. Kishan, if I could see you and Mr. Edwards at the podium, please?
Parents, yes and no? You're good. Kishan? My pleasure. And Jim? Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Okay, Kishan. Kishan is in seventh grade at North Stars Academy. Your parents are Wilson and Jennifer, sitting back there, and your grandparents are with you also, correct? Okay. I am told that you are a good student. You are respectful to others, and you're valued volunteer at the Children's Museum and elsewhere. So you're, you're, you're doing a lot for our community, and that's the community of Marquette, and we appreciate people that do good things for Marquette. So that's why we're, we're honored, we're pleased to have you here tonight. I'm going to let Jim give us a little bit more background. Jim, on Kishan?
Commissioner's mayor, thank you. Kishan breezed into the Children's Museum over a year ago. Come on up a bit closer, we want to see you, want to see you, I'm going to embarrass you now. And I wanted him to be here to receive this award a year ago, and you didn't know that, but he did. And he disappeared in August, and along came September, and I couldn't give him the award, I hadn't seen him for a month, and it's, it's football. This is a footballer. This man is immersed in football, he's good at it, too. And so, we talked a month ago, and I said, "Don't disappear on me this time." I get to see Kishan in the summer, and he breezes in, backpack behind him, hat on, and he comes, fixes everything, goes away. Comes in again, and we're glad of it, and suddenly, our problems go away, because Kishan's here. And so, this summer's been amazing, and we chatted, and he said, "Well, I have to go to football, but I'll come to the museum once a week." And I called mom to make sure he was going to be here tonight, and lo and behold, he was at the museum in my absence, fixing everything I hadn't done this week. So, this showman, I hope, I think, will be with us for a while, and he's already threatened me that he's going to be in on, for five hours on Wednesday, because North Star has a half-day.
Kishan, because the city appreciates all that you do for, again, the city and the Children's Museum, we want to give you this, it's, read it, it's the Youth Leadership Awarded, presented to Kishan Plaw, the U.P. Children's Museum Outstanding Guardian of the Corridor for, dated today. So, on behalf of the city of Marquette, I thank you, I give you this, I have one more thing. The chairman of our suite committee, Commissioner Sarah Reynolds, got up at five o'clock this morning to make this for you. Don't eat it before you go to bed, but save it for tomorrow. Thank you for all you do for the city, and for your school, and for the Children's Museum. Thank you.
Our next presentation of the evening is the Police Fire Pension Board by Chair Kirk Vogler. Kirk?
Thank you, Commissioner's mayor. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Kirk Vogler. I work for the fire department, I've been on the department for about seven and a half years. I've been on the pension board for about seven years. I jumped into it kind of right off the get-go. So this is just going to be a brief synopsis of some of the things that we've accomplished this year and reviewed. Just going over the foundation, I guess you could say, of the pension system, it complies with Public Act three forty-five, the city established that back in nineteen thirty-seven for the retirement for police and fire department. That act gives us a lot of guidance, we can only do so much as far as the way the pension system is laid out, and stipulations, and stuff like that, so. The, the board makeup, you have myself as the chair, Mike Archikowski is the secretary, he's the representative from the police department. Mary Slick is our staff liaison, she's the city treasurer. Bill Toomey, or William Toomey, is a trustee, and that's somebody, you know, one of the citizens of the community, and then also G.G. Gordon is another one. We have a full board, which is excellent. When I first started, Sarah sat on the board, we did not have a full, full board, we were shy one, sometimes two. We have to have a quorum to have these meetings, which is a minimum of three. So it's, it's real important to have those two, and it's, we're very grateful, they've been great board members, and we have a really solid board right now, so that's nice. Last year, we had eleven meetings, we're supposed to have twelve, and they're the fourth Tuesday of every month. We had eleven meetings and one special meeting. We had one canceled due to lack of quorum, and no unexcused absences. So this is kind of the meat and potatoes, so to speak, of the pension system. This breaks it down pretty well. We have current members, so these are the members that are in the retirement system, active and retired. Active members, these are members that are contributing to the pension system. Police, there's thirty-three, fire, there's twenty-five, and that's for a total of fifty-eight. And then members that are benefiting from the system, they're actually receiving the benefits. Retired, we have thirty-eight, police, and twenty-nine fire, for a total of sixty-seven. So you can see we have more people drawing on the plan than paying into it. I know both the police and fire last negotiations in their contract raised contributions from five to six percent to try to help with some of that, as well as the city's also agreed to continue to support the pension system. We have four deferred members, and that just means that they are vested, so they have ten years into the plan, and they're going to receive a benefit once they become of age, but they're not currently yet, so. Pension fund as of August of thirty-first this year, you can see there, it's a little over thirty-three and a half million dollars. We had a presentation last month, our actuarial, which gave us some nice new statistics, were funded at seventy-four percent. That would have been, in that small writing below, it would have been seventy-seven percent, but they changed a few things. They went from, they changed the assumption rate from seven percent to six point seven five, which put downward pressure on it, and they also did a new mortality table, people are living longer, they're going to be drawing on the system longer. So it would have been seventy-seven percent if they hadn't changed those things. Some accomplishments, some things we've done this year, since changing investment managers, in August of two thousand and thirteen, we've had six point nine-one percent of growth, and the seven percent's been the assumption, so that's actually really good. That just dropped to six point seven, seven-five percent. We were able to issue thirteenth check, again, this year, and we have for many years. A lot of people don't realize, but there's no COLA or cost of living raise as they retire out, they are making the same amount in retirement. When they leave, as in thirty years, they don't get any sort of bump, so this thirteenth check is really big. It benefits, it's weighted, so the longer you're out, the more you get, but we dispersed thirty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-four eligible recipients, and we just did a breakdown, that was an average of seven hundred and thirty-one dollars per recipient. And then we completed an RFP for Investment Management and Custodial Services. Since I've been on the board, we've talked about doing that, and it had been a really long time since we'd done one, it was kind of hanging over our heads. Mary, the city treasurer, took the bow by the horns, got it facilitated, did a lot of work, the board, I give them so much credit, especially the people that come in and volunteer their time. Going over, I mean, we had a stack of seven binders with a ton of pages they had to read through and actually try to make sense of it. We ended up sticking with Wells Fargo, based out of the seven, that's who we had prior. After looking at everything and the services they offered, we ended up sticking with them, so. The board also puts together a summary annual report, gets published on the website, goes out to all the people that are in the system, or in the, or, yeah, the retirement system, just kind of gives out a synopsis, so. Goals, these, these change, I know last year, we had on there that we wanted to do an RFP, so we were able to check one, check that off, but these are pretty standard. Obviously, maintain due diligence in monitoring and reviewing investment activity for the pension fund, and to continue to manage and operate the retirement system, ensuring its viability for current and future retirees of the police and fire departments of the city of Marquette. It's a really, really important benefit to both, I know, the police and the firefighters, and we want to make sure that it's around for new hires coming through the door, and for a long time, so. Some issues or things to talk about, obviously, retention of trustees. When I first got on the board, that was a big thing, but as that states, we've had a pretty stable board since November of sixteen. We will have two terms that'll expire in two thousand and nineteen, and we're hoping to be able to retain those. You're able to sit on it for two, four-year terms, so hopefully, we'll either retain the two we have, or a couple other people step up. And then the funding of unfunded accrued liability, it's at seventy-four, that's that seventy-four percent I was talking about. A general good status, if you, you know, talk to people in that industry, is eighty percent, not that, I specifically asked the actuarial, comparing our apple to apples, our pension fund to other ones across the state, where are we sitting, he said you're sitting really well. So, that's good. And then find strategies to facilitate a program that now has more retirees than active members participating. Obviously, we, we know if you keep taking more out of a basket, you're going to end up with nothing, so, open to any strategies and ideas. Anybody have any questions?
Commissioners, anything you care to know? Pretty straightforward.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Kirk, thank you, yeah, you, very important committee, and we thank you for serving on it for as long as you have, and hope you continue to do so.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we move to public hearing, we have one public hearing tonight. That is a public hearing for the two thirty-one West Patisserie Combined Brownfield Plan. City Clerk, would you please give us some background?
Thank you, sir. A combined brownfield plan is being proposed for the redevelopment of the functionally obsolete and blighted property at two thirty-one West Washington Street. A public hearing has been established for tonight's meeting, and a resolution prepared for city commission consideration for the approval of the combined brownfield plan. Approval of the combined brownfield plan will provide for the reimbursement of brownfield non-environmental eligible activity costs, including lead and asbestos abatement, selective demolition, and reconstruction of the downtown development authority walkway for the development of two thirty-one West Patisserie, which will include a bakery and restaurant on the lower level and main floor, and residential apartments on the second floor. The property is located in both the DDA and Local Development Financing Authority, LDFA, Tax Increment Financing, TIF districts, which have first right to certain tax increment revenues. In order to receive approval for state, state tax capture for non-environmental eligible activities, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the MEDC, and the Michigan Strategic Fund, the MSF, requires either a proportionate expense or approval to forego future tax increment revenues to reimburse brownfield eligible activities. Inter-local agreements under the Urban Cooperation Act with the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority were approved by the DDA Board at their July twelfth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, and the LDFA Board at their July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. The combined brownfield plan was reviewed and approved by the MBRA at their August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen meeting, with the recommendation for city commission approval. A public hearing was set for tonight at the August twenty-seventh city commission meeting. A resolution is attached for consideration and approval of the combined brownfield plan for two thirty-one West Patisserie. Fiscal effect, as described in the attached brownfield plan, recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the attached resolution to approve the combined brownfield plan for two thirty-one West Patisserie in accordance with Act three eighty-one as amended, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Mac McClellan, who is the consultant for the brownfield authority, and Mac is going to give us a little bit more information on this item. Mac?
Thank you, Mayor Campana. Again, I'm Mac McClellan, with Awamabi, we're the brownfield consultant for the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. The city manager asked me to do a two-hour presentation, but I thought I would cut that back just a little bit there, perhaps, so. Just in summary, a brownfield plan is proposed to support the redevelopment at two thirty-one West Washington, I think you know, all know the boarded-up building that's at that location. There are certain brownfield activities that are proposed for reimbursement over time, generated by the increased taxes from the additional investment on that property. As Kyle mentioned, because the project is located in the DDA and the LDFA TIF districts, they're already capturing taxes, including city taxes and some state taxes, on that property. The state requires the participation of the locals to have the skin of the game, as it were, to, to participate as well, and not just capture state taxes, so they've required that inter-local agreement. And there is a plan that goes to the local approval, the brownfield plan, and then an Act three D one work plan that goes to the state for state tax capture approval. The act was changed to allow the combination of those, and that's what you see before you, tonight, is the combined brownfield plan. And the approval process includes the brownfield authority, a public hearing, and city commission approval. That's a quick summary? Of course, I have more to say, but I'll try and run this, this relatively quickly here, so. Just as background, brownfield redevelopment incentives really provide for the reimbursement, as we mentioned, of certain eligible activities, not all activities, but certain eligible activities, on eligible property through tax increment financing, and I'll explain that briefly. Eligible property can be contaminated, that's probably what we think of for brownfield properties as well, and was the original intent of the act. In two thousand, they also added blighted properties and functionally obsolete properties, properties that are a public nuisance, or have facilities disconnected, or functionally obsolete properties that can no longer be used for their intended purpose. And just recently, they added historic resources, something that designated local, state, or federal historic properties. The state had found there were a number of properties that needed subsistence and redevelopment, and just weren't necessarily falling under the contaminated area. You also can include adjacent properties, we don't have in this case, but include adjacent properties as well, if they add to the taxable value to repay the eligible activities. But, in order for any of those things to happen, a brownfield plan has to be approved by the brownfield authority and the governing body, as well as the state for state tax capture. The eligible activities are in two, three different categories, environmental eligible activities, the investigation that you do before you buy a property to see if it's contaminated or not, any protection activities that you have to do while you're redeveloping that contaminated property, and any other additional response activities. There are no environmental eligible activities proposed under this brownfield plan. In two thousand, again, they added non-environmental eligible activities, so for every community in the state, you can capture lead and asbestos abatement and demolition are eligible activities. For about a hundred and twenty communities throughout the state, including the city of Marquette, the site preparation and infrastructure are also eligible activities, certainly important for the other brownfield projects that have happened within the city. There are some other eligible activities, Marquette was one of the first communities to utilize the relocation of public facilities for economic development purposes, the relocation of municipal services center, also allows for acquisition or clearing title by landbank authorities or qual, or core communities. Fees for overpriced consultants like myself for the preparation of the brownfield plan, Act three D one work plan, and actually, what we do is ask the developers to pay the upfront fees for all of these preparations, so there's no upfront fees that are paid by the brownfield authority or the city in facilitating these approvals. Environmental assurance and administrative and operating costs for local taxes only. The property is at, we mentioned, two thirty-one West Washington. It is, it does meet the definition both of blighted and functionally obsolete, but for this purpose, we have an affidavit of functional obsolescence prepared by Miles, the city assessor, as well. Just a quick review of what it looks like now, and what it will look like after redevelopment, and showing the, the south view as well, the north view previously. The proposal is for a bakery and restaurant on the lower and main level, and apartments on the upper level. Eligible activities include lead and asbestos abatement, a previous survey identified the presence of asbestos-containing materials and lead-based paint that has to be managed, the asbestos material has to be abated prior to any of the demolition activities in the site. It also includes demolition, some selective demolition, including the floor, the basement roof, and the facade, and a fire back in two thousand and seven actually took out the first floor, so there is no floor that's, that's in there as well, so clearing up and cleaning up all of that debris and material as well. And the infrastructure improvement is a redevelopment and reconstruction of the DDA walkway between West Washington and the alley, with improved It also includes demolition, some selective demolition, including the floor, the basement roof, and the facade. And a fire back in 2007 actually took out the first floor, so there is no floor that's, that's in there as well. So clearing up and cleaning up all of that debris and material as well. And the infrastructure improvement is a redevelopment and reconstruction of the DDA walkway between West Washington and the alley, with improved signage and lighting along that area as well. Just quickly, the lead and asbestos abatement, demolition, and infrastructure costs are identified with all the contingencies, about $204,000. Interest is also included as an eligible expense. The work plan review and administrative and operating dollars, so a total of 312, almost $313,000. Just to give kind of a graphic example about how brownfields work, if there was no improvement on the site, the site currently generates about $1,700 in taxes, and will continue along that. After the redevelopment of that, the taxes would jump up to approximately $50,000 as well. Those, those initial taxes are captured to reimburse those eligible activity costs there. There also is a proposal or inclusion in there for capture for the local brownfield fund that goes back to support other projects within the city, and has been used extensively, extensively on the Clissdow site, as a matter of fact. And then after that time period, those taxes go back to the taxing jurisdictions. And so for this investment on the front end that helps the project happen and move forward, there's a pretty great return on that project as well. Estimated investment is about 2.5 million. The current taxes, as I mentioned, are $1,766. After the redevelopment is, it'll be about $50,000, $49,000, and continue to increase over that time period. The capture period is eight years, plus the timeframe to, for the local brownfield fund. Again, just gives you an idea. We also have to give some money to the state, of course, for their state brownfield fund in that as well, and the local brownfield fund. So for total capture of about $450,000 over just that thirty-year period, and certainly those taxes continue to accrue beyond that thirty-year period, about 1.3 million in additional taxes for the taxing jurisdictions. As was mentioned, we do have to have those interlocal agreements. The DDA and LDFA are to capture taxes, and the brownfield would only be able to capture the remaining taxes, which are not much in this case, without an agreement. As we mentioned, the state requires everybody to be all in, and those LDFA and DDA agreements were executed, approved by both the Brownfield Authority and by the LDFA and DDA as well. At that timeframe, and the Brownfield Authority approved those. There also is a development and reimbursement agreement, not subject to city commission approval, because there's no city dollars or public infrastructure. The developer is paying for the infrastructure improvements, so that would be between the, the BRA, the Brownfield Authority, and the developer. There's some key considerations in there, who gets what when, in terms of the allocations, making sure that all of those conditions are met before the repayment of those activities, including adequate taxes. If the project never moves forward, there's no obligation to repay any dollars, except those which are generated by the project itself. And also has a process for documenting and approving those expenses. We have a budget here, but the reimbursement is based on actual documented invoices that the developer submits. We review and, and the Brownfield Authority approves. Also includes indemnities, insurance, and holds the city and the Brownfield Authority harmless for any third-party claims as well, and again, approved by the Brownfield Authority and the developer. The schedule was, the project was introduced May 30th through the Brownfield Authority. The, the Brownfield Authority approved the plan on August 23rd. It's here tonight for the public hearing and your consideration of the resolution. And we will look for MSF combined plan approval. I said it depends in there, because there's also other work that's being done with the Michigan Strategic Fund, and they'd like to package this all together. So we're working through that process as well, so. I could answer any questions or?
Thank you for the presentation. Do you have a question?
Just comment. Just comment. Just a comment. I think it's a great, it's a great idea for, for the city to do, and great for the local contractors to be able to help out, and it's good for the economy, I think. No increased taxes to the city, but it's a benefit to the whole city, because you're saying bakery, restaurant. It's a good place to have everybody go to eat, and good, it's an eyesore right now, so I agree. Get it fixed up and be great for everybody, and great job for the brownfield.
Commissioner Schlegel, you had something?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mac. Sorry.
Yeah, I know, we should.
You should have the public.
Yeah.
Before those comments.
Okay, we are gonna open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to address us on this item, you have three minutes at the front podium. We need name and address. At this point, does anybody wish to address us on this item? Anybody have anything to say about this reconstruction of this building? Anybody? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. We are gonna go to a motion. Would someone like to make a motion? Would anybody like to make a motion? Somebody. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I, I motion to approve the attached resolution to approve the combined brownfield plan for 231 West Palisade in accordance with Act 381 as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
We'll go for comments. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything?
As Commissioner Frazier mentioned earlier, it's a, it's a win-win for everybody, and a great opportunity for the city, as well as the opportunity to bring additional business downtown. Thoroughly support it. We've worked with the brownfield development folks for some time now, and had great success with it. That's all, your honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, anything?
Like, like Commissioner Stonehouse said, whatever the brownfield does is great for the community.
Commissioners, anybody else? Commissioner Schlegel?
Preparatory question, right?
Quick question, Mac. Thanks for the presentation. There are potentially other grants, facade grants, things along that line that might go in line with the DDA. Does the brownfield project, is there any reason that they couldn't proceed after something else like that? Or is it gotta be strictly in the, underneath the brownfield umbrella?
No, there are many projects that layer grants, especially for eligible activities. Some of the other grants pay for non-brownfield activities, so they'll pay for construction activities that the Brownfield Authority can't do. So it's often layered across that area. There are also DEQ grants that pay for some of the environmental eligible activities, lead and asbestos abatement. That would eliminate or reduce the need for the brownfield TIF revenues. So there are some layers to that, as well as those opportunities. We may look at that for future projects.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mac. No, this, this building downtown is probably the only eyesore that we have left remaining, so it'll be a pleasure to see it fixed up and in business again. If there's no further comment, this is a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Yes.
And Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries seven zero. Next we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Seeing no comments, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That also carries seven zero. We have one new business item tonight. That item is a request for license to use city property at 600 North Third Street. City Clerk, would you please give us the background?
Thank you, sir. On behalf of Moore Cowbell LLC, Barry J. Poles and Architects has applied for a license to construct a new access ramp at 600 North Third Street for access from the Third Street right-of-way to a new office. Fiscal effect, the fee for a license to use city property is currently $100 per year. Recommendation, per the recommendations of the engineering and public works departments, deny the request. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Okay, before we get into it, we had a couple people that wish to speak. The first is George Hyde. George, would you, George?
Thank you, Coach. Myself and Derek Swagginen have operated our law firm, Hyde and Swagginen, out of Old City Hall in Marquette since 2003. Couple of years ago, we bought, actually, three years ago, we bought this building, which was the old Forsberg Flowers building. And with designs to hopefully put our law firm in there. Since then, we have renovated the four apartments upstairs. They're all brand-new, fully rented all the time. And then about a year ago, Contrast Coffee signed a lease with us, and they operate about half of the square footage on the lower floor. We now are renovating our other half of that building for our law offices. We're hoping to get approval from the city to be able to place a porch in the front of the building, just with steps, not very big. And Barry's here to talk about that specifically. But we're hoping to have an entrance in the front of our building on basically our half of the front face of the building, just with, I think, two or three steps with a small landing going into our door. We have a handicap accessible entrance in the back to our, our future law offices that we constructed at the time that the building was being built out for contrast. So that's taken care of, but that handicap ramp would have been way too large to put in the front of the building. So we planned for that, put the ramp in the back. It'll be fully accessible and, and meets the, all the ADA requirements, and has been approved by the building codes, folks. So we just want the opportunity, and we're hoping the city will grant us a license in order to have that, that entrance to the front. As Barry will talk to you about, Contrast Coffee, which, well, it was the old entrance to the Forsberg Flowers building, there is a handicap accessible ramp there with steps on the other side, and it does protrude onto the, into the sidewalks, certainly. That's there, it's grandfathered in, and, and they use that for their entrance, but it's a totally separate entrance than what we would require. And our proposed steps with small landing would be smaller, much smaller than what's already there for Contrast Coffee. In terms of any concern that the public works department has, we would assure the city that we would do all necessary, everything necessary to remove any snow accumulation there. We would keep that clear to the extent that the city public works folks don't get that far close to the building. So we assure you that that would not be an issue. We've invested a lot of money into this building, in, in our small way, increasing the tax base of, you know, for, for Marquette. Once our build-out is done, we will have invested about $250,000 into that building. And we, we really look forward to practicing there. So we would ask that you approve our appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paulson?
I think George just about covered everything. I guess the, the one thing I'd like to address is what we're asking for here is really a very small little stoop. And it's just really so we can have a front door off of Third Street. As George mentioned, all of the windows and the existing entrance went with the coffee shop, so now there's just a blank wall. So certainly to have a presence, to have the business have an identity on the street, we're looking to create, put some windows and a door in there, so. And, you know, Marquette is a town of topography, right? So we have lots of these situations where floors don't meet sidewalks, so. And I know we've, we've done a lot of these through the years. I certainly understand public works and engineering resisting these types of things, because it's, it's an obstruction in the right-of-way. I would like to point out in this case that we have plenty of room. We have more room than what exists currently with the current encroachment. And we have plenty of room for the DDA's snowblower thing that runs through the streets or the sweeper. And so, and it's also a relatively flat sidewalk. The sidewalk is 10 foot six inches wide. Now, if this were a six-foot-wide sidewalk, I can see where you'd say, no, you shouldn't do this. But in this case, there is plenty of room. There's still six foot six from back of curb to this, the ports that we're gonna create, so. So plenty of room. It's relatively flat. We're not creating any hazards. It's just letting this business have an identity on Third Street, so. Any questions? Certainly answer.
If we do, we'll call you back up, Paul Zat. Thank you very much. Sarah?
I just have to mention that I have to abstain from this item, as Moore Cowbell and Hyde and Swagginen is my employers, so I will not be voting on it. So just wanted to put that out there before the discussion begins.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, we need a motion. Are you?
I would like to make a motion to suspend Robert's rules of order to have discussion on this topic.
We would need a second. Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
A vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Opposed. Any?
Commissioner Reynolds abstain on that vote, I think.
Abstain.
Six oh.
Five. Five one. We have one, one no vote. One no vote, one abstention. Okay, so. Commissioner Smith?
So, obviously I've read through the documents. I'm just wondering from the city perspective as to why this was denied, if we can get an explanation before we do our vote. And also, I show on this worksheet that the second-level apartments are still not registered with the city rental program, and I'm wondering if we can get an update on that.
Uh, city staff, somebody can address us on that?
I, I think Barry really covered it all, and George covered a lot of it too, as far as what's actually out there. When we look at putting obstructions in the right-of-way, we try to look not only what's going there now, but looking out into the future, what might be going there. We don't maintain it, as was pointed out right now. It's actually maintained by the DDA for a lot of that. But one of the big considerations we give is obviously, little less than six months up here, but good portion of the, the year, you're, you're dealing with snow and, and fighting with snow, and trying to get that type of equipment in there. You know, certainly when we look at our equipment, even our smaller equipment, we don't utilize the small tractors that are just over three feet wide, like the DDA has. All of our machinery, even our small stuff, you know, really ranges from a stance of roughly about 48 inches. And you put some of the implements on it for maintaining the sidewalks, and then you're up to 60 to 72 inches. So that's the perspective we really try to look at, at things through. And, and certainly, you know, even, even though, you know, the, the US Access Board and that, when you look at what their minimums are, yeah, it goes down to 32 inches for a, a straight passage. You'll probably be able to maintain that, and just barely in the wintertime in a few of those areas, although, as was pointed out, the, the new structure is not gonna come out as far as what the existing structure does. That's probably truly where the pinch point is, when you look at that. And certainly, you know, not even looking at just the straight line alone, looking at maneuverability. You're not gonna be able to take a straight shot through there. You've got street lamps, street signs. I'm not sure if, if Monopole's the litter barrels in for the wintertime or not, but, you know, those are the types of things we're looking for. And, you know, certainly when you put a permanent structure in there, you know, that's, that's a little bit more difficult to deal, deal with long-term. But as was pointed out, completely understand, we're a, a town of a lot of topography. It's pretty rare for a building that size in most of your business district that you can have two entrances at the exact same level, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I had a second part of the question. On the worksheet that was filled out, it was stated that the second-level apartments are still not registered with the city rental program.
Would you care to address that at the front podium, please?
As we understood it, the, the remaining issue on that registry was a parking diagram that was absent from our application. That's been done, that's been submitted. I don't know if it's been, if, if the submission of that has caused the registry to have occurred. But I assure you that that was done last week, and it was submitted. And, and really, we just had to diagram the parking spaces, like what parking spaces behind the building were tenant parking spaces for the, for apartments. We've done that, we've submitted it. If it's not yet approved, it should be any, any day.
We don't have the fire chief here to tell us the procedures, so we really aren't sure. I'm assuming it's just, that's another checklist item that you haven't gotten to.
That was the last one, as we understood it. And we thought it had been done, we had overlooked it, but it's done.
And we thought it had been done, we had overlooked it, but it's done, and the registry should be accomplished. So we apologize for that oversight.
Okay, well, I'm sure keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
Scott?
I just wanted to make one last point. The drawing that, that Barry provided there, I was going to look for another example, but he's got a great example right on the plan that he, he submitted. I- in general, some of the things that we're looking for, are there other alternatives to putting things in the right of way? You know, in this case, the grade may not permit that, as was pointed out, if you put a ramp in this door, it'd probably extend a long way through the building. But in the southeast corner of the building, that's a great example of, you know, working with the grades and doing something interior to the building that doesn't interfere with the right of way.
Again, thank you. Any other comments here? Your name, your, um, yes. Barry, is there any reason why we just don't do a step up here?
Like building code, you had to have a flat landing on both sides of the door, of the minimum size, so this is what that is, so it is required. You can't just have a door and a step.
Okay, so just because of the tripping hazard, obviously, even with your handicap access out back?
That's right. Any, any door has to have flat spots on both sides of it, so the door swings open or as you're approaching the door, you're standing on level ground.
Okay. And is there any reason, Scott, that, that you'd be putting a 72-inch plow through that, that neck of the woods versus a standard, whatever size snow blower you guys are using there? I mean, you're already making a swipe out for the original grandfathered access point.
We're not, we're not actually maintaining it, the, the DDA is maintaining with a smaller piece of equipment.
Okay.
So that comment was purely looking into the future, if at someday the DDA doesn't exist.
I see. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Question for Barry.
Don't go too far, Barry.
This is called exercise, but is the, the ramp that you're discussing, is that ADA compliant?
The one we built interior in the back of the building, yes.
How about the one in the front?
Uh, the current one, I, I, I don't know, that's just been there since Forsberg.
No, no, I meant the one that you're, we're discussing constructing.
Well, this, this is not the accessible route. We do have the accessible entrance we've created off of, uh, that's Ohio Street.
Okay, so this ramp is really to make, to meet the requirement of not having a, a step on, on the entrance and exit?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments on this? Seeing none, we should, we need a motion to end the suspension.
I would move that we reinstate Robert's Rules of Order.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Now we're back to the point where we need to make a motion. Someone care to make a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I motion to approve the request of the requister. That make sense? I think that's clear.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Comments? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I, I, again, I look at this and I realize that maybe half the buildings in, in the city of Marquette are non-compliant, so this certainly would be just really another one of those situations. But I'm also looking at it from the standpoint of what's there, frankly, looking at pictures of the building, and I see what they've got for Contrast Coffee, I'm looking at what they want to do on the other side of the building, which would actually be smaller and better than and more accessible than what's in front of Contrast Coffee, which is limited by the city, in fact, putting a no parking sign up that makes the access to any snow plowing even more difficult. So I look at the city's arguments of accessibility and what might happen in the future as simply not really being, uh, uh, what am I going to say? Really being, being compliant with the intention of what our policy would be for development and how we can best use our city streets and assets.
Commissioner Frazier, anything?
I can see like Mr. Stonehouse said about if there's a huge ramp or something going out there to be a conflict, but being that the DDA's just got a small snow blower, you know, three feet wide tractor, it should be okay, and the owners have already qualified that they said they're going to try and take care of the ramp the best they can, it's just steps to access their building, because for some reason they don't want people going into the law office to the coffee shop, even though it might be good for business, you know, but who knows, but I think it's a good idea.
I'm, think we probably all went down and looked at it, I know I did, and the sidewalk in front of that area is wider than the normal sidewalk. I realize that our planning department has rules and ordinances to govern building within the city, and we, and, and we have to have that. If we don't have it, it, it becomes a free-for-all in the city. So they are doing their job properly, it's, the problem is we have so much non-conforming property within the city, it's, it's really hard to make one plan fit all. What our planning department's doing is the right thing, but in this situation, City Commission, I, you know, we're allowed to operate in the gray a little bit, and I, and I think this is one of, one instance, we don't do it all the time, but personally, I think I want to see that entrance because it's, this is a business going into Third Street, uh, it's going to look better. As he said, he's dropped a lot of money to develop this place, so that's an improvement for the city. Yes, he's leaving one place, moving to another, but it's still an upgrade. So I, I appreciate the planning department, I mean, they have, they have their rules and we have, we have to appreciate them and follow them, but sometimes, sometimes we don't do that. So put it on us, but I would like, I think that I would like to see the doorway put there. Do we have any more comments? If not, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Before I do that, what is, what is the recommendation? Let's go back to that. I don't want to, huh? To approve the building?
Request.
Okay, then let's do this again. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
Abstain.
And one abstention. Thank you. Now we come to our second public comment of the evening, again, a time when citizens can address the commission. I'm going to open public comment, you got three minutes at the front podium. Name and address. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this time?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Brahm, and I live at 404 East Magnetic Street, and I'm about to say something in front of this board that I'm fairly certain has never been said before in the history of the city. I know way too much about sewage treatment, and the reason I'm starting with this is I'm talking about the budget proposal, and I realize we're having another budget meeting tomorrow, but I wanted to get this on the record tonight. I know way too much about sewage treatment because I'm a degreed chemical engineer from Michigan Tech, who in my first year tried to take an easy class in conservation, thinking it would be Smokey the Bear and Contour Plowing, and I ran into an insane person from the 60s who decided that any engineer from Michigan Tech had to understand sewage treatment intimately. So for seven out of 10 weeks, we studied sewage treatment, and when we protested, he said wherever you go and whatever you do in your career, you're going to end up in a situation where where you are needs more money for sewage treatment, water treatment, everything else, but that the local authority can convince the people that they need it, and therefore it doesn't get done until there's a disaster. If you want to look up disaster in water treatment, I welcome you to invite looking at the newspapers, what's happening in Flint. In the past three months, they've been working on my street, Magnetic Street, I've got pictures here of the pipe that they removed. The pipe that they removed is something called Orangeburg Pipe, it was put into the east side of Marquette right after World War II. It is basically wood pulp held together with resin. It is not pipe as anybody would recognize, it is illegal to use right now. You have got to pass this budget with those improvements, you have got to hit up the taxpayers for this money. Otherwise, you are abrogating your responsibility to the taxpayers who elected you, because there is no town of Marquette, there is no art of Marquette, there is no port of Marquette, unless you have adequate water, sewage treatment, and stormwater treatment. And I say this from this side of the podium, knowing full well that I'm trying to get on that side of the podium. And so rather than be, now I'm calming down, but now rather than be emotional about this, I want to put my money where my mouth is. I'm well aware that this budget is going to cause great hardship to a number of people on fixed incomes, and I think we have a responsibility to put together a fund to help taxpayers who can't pay their water bills with the improvements, pay them. And in the event that I'm elected to a seat on this commission, I'm offering my salary for those five years to go into that fund, where people who cannot afford to pay their increased water can apply to that fund to get relief. I am literally putting my money where my mouth is, I do not want my beloved hometown of Marquette to end up being the second Flint in the state, state of Michigan. So please, please have the courage to vote for those increases in the city budget for water, stormwater, and sewer treatment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. I guess to start off, I'll disagree a little bit about that. I believe the taxes of homeownership and the taxes of business ownership would be better applied for the improvements of our pipes and infrastructure than to make it a fee-based salary fund. We currently have a water fund that is, has contributions from our fee-based, it was used for fixing the white, the pipe that went out to Lake Superior. I do believe, though, the infrastructure is a lot less, or a lot longer lasting, thus more important for the taxes of Marquette, and everybody hates raising taxes, but there are certain things you as a city should probably accept, as this might be one of them, we could probably do a lot more than if we do just fees. Anyways, that takes a minute up my time, and I'm sorry about that, but I haven't been here for two months. Last time I was here, Ms. Reynolds asked for an update on the hospital. In between the time that I was here last and, and now, I gave a second presentation about something I called Mars University, which is basically a, a science center for Mars exploration. At the same time, that, I've open-ended it, I've, I've canceled promoting Marquette because I haven't heard anything from the city of Marquette or any of you, and back in June, I sent you all a proposal for how you as a city could move forward with the blighted properties. I mean, honestly, the, the speech that was just made about 231, I want to do for the hospital and for the power plant. Right now, you're talking about raising electric rates because we're going to shut down a power plant. We have an operational power plant. Please consider that the city of Marquette has an oper, has a responsibility to deal with that property, and there's very few things that we can do with that property. So the brownfield development, before it goes to bankruptcy and before it becomes a brownfield development, the city of Marquette can take the steps to make sure that, one, we're not wasting our time on the fees that we spend for lawyers and the tax tribunal cases that are inevitably going to be coming up, that I hope you're budgeting for, but two, this is something that you can treat as a Washington Street or DDA type of event. We can create a whole new committee for it, we can create a board for it, if you as a city could tell us as the city residents, what is going on there? I mean, it's been two months since Ms. Reynolds asked, and I don't believe Mr. Schlegel or Ms. Smith have ever received an update. So I'm asking about that, I'm also asking about the, during the primary debate, Mr. Ploard, you talked about how we have a, what you call it, guy in Lansing, what's his lobbyist, Alan Lansing, promoting our ci, our city. I was wondering what his agenda is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paul Carson, I'm at 1714 Fitch Avenue. I just, I'm looking at the consent agenda for next meeting, 5D, the public hearing to consider fireworks ordinances, 669 and 670. When the paper made the article that they did in reference to this, I tried to go on the website to look up those proposed ordinances, or the old one that was listed in there, and your, the Marquette City website has been redone since the last I went on it, and I couldn't find any of this information, and I would just, my question is, is could this information on these be available to city residences either on your website or at the city hall, so we could review and go over the, what they are before the public hearing? That would be greatly appreciated.
If you would like to talk to the city clerk after the meeting, I'm sure he can help you out. City clerk, would that be correct?
That's correct, sir. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Jeff Berito, these are my opinions. Mr. Schlegel's comment for me to attend planning meetings is well-taken, but there's only so much volunteer time, and these meetings draw the highest viewership, so to get the word out, I've only gone when scenic parcels were threatened by development. Mr. Frazier wasn't listening when I said some of us feel the view from the statue was better before. August 27th, Mr. Campana told the Japanese delegation that he hopes to learn from them and them from us, this when he continued to act rudely during public comment. He also cut a man from the township off at exactly three minutes when he's given his preferred speakers extra seconds. He's on record again treating people differently. He also accused me of complaining about everything, which is not true. I'd complimented the Ja, Japanese delegation, the redevelopment document, the public peers' proposal, and the 79% of us who favor no development at Hartwood. Not all negative is accused with no specifics provided. He suffers from selective hearing. We've recorded too many examples of this board failing to consult our attorney. Mr. Keith told me that he generally doesn't interject unless called upon, although he did once tonight. Based on our history, you're strongly urged to instruct the attorney to interject when he senses a violation is imminent or has occurred, and when his contribution will help facilitate our meetings. If this board won't instruct him, I urge, urge the attorney to interject anyway. Almost any chair will let the attorney speak whenever the attorney wishes to. Instead, we've seen Mr. Ploard act as our attorney when we're paying a real attorney. Yet this chair rides along with Mr. Ploard's every novice word, you know, the guy who resorts to bathroom talk. Great advice for Mr. Ploard is to shy away from legal opinions and personal attack and offer specifics other than how I'm sitting in a chair. Smarten up like Mr. Stonehouse did after being caught embellishing stories on at least three publicized occasions. Now he ignores the comments altogether, which has reduced my criticism of, of him, but he's still guilty of not responding. Contrarily, Mr. Ploard provokes the public with outrageous comments to his detriment every time, including tonight. He's had an entire meeting to concoct a clever response. Did he stoop so low as to hold my anxiety against me through his misuse of a well-known diversion tactic? There's no place on a board for someone who discredits an adversary through deceit and other disregard for the specifics on record. He's repeatedly shown this propensity to spew out meaningless, easily refutable words just to get him through the moment. When he ran out of replies, he resorted to bathroom humor. Before November, voters are urged to listen for themselves to the August 27th record, one hour, 36 minutes, and 43 seconds into the meeting. Mr. Ploard is asked again to offer me the same challenge he offered to Mr. Gallant on August 27th, except with blazing confidence.
Anyone else?
I hope this is the forum. My name's Barb Ozai, I live at 1324 North Front Street, and I'm assuming everyone knows about this by now, but, and this may not be the right forum, but on Labor Day, Labor Day, there was a rescue by a lifeguard off of Black Rocks, and I just want to make sure that if it's not on your attention, you know, on your, your radar, that it, that it becomes one. Because, you know, I had, I'd been away from Marquette for a long time, when I came back and went to Black Rocks myself, I noticed there were signs, I know they're trying to prevent erosion, but, you know, Black Rocks this way, and there's nothing, absolutely nothing on Black Rocks in case, you know, someone isn't, you know, goes in the water. So on Labor Day, a non-swimmer from Northern jumped in, you know, peer pressure, and fortunately there was a woman there who jumped in and, you know, removed him, he was climbing on top of another swimmer, and literally saved his life. So, you know, like I said, you probably know about this already, I don't know what the right forum is to give her a hero award also, but also just bring your attention that we really need something. your attention that we really need something out there in the future, you know. Anyway, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. We'll start with Commissioner Reynolds.
All right. First thing as to the fireworks people, I had the advantage of knowing a little bit what was going on prior to tonight's meeting because I was in the agenda review with city manager, Mike Angeline. I think he'll probably... I'm going to ask him to talk about it right now a little bit when he talks. And I felt comfortable with the new language that we're going forward with. And I understand your concern as far as things coming onto your property. And I think the way it's worded and the way that we can enforce it gives the police some ability to enforce such a thing. So then the second thing, I just actually read about that on Facebook about an hour before I came here about the lifeguard situation. I know in previous years, we have, you know, recognized someone for doing a lifesaving effort. So if my other commissioners are interested in such a thing, I would support such an effort. But that is all I got this evening.
Commissioner Plord?
Thank you, Your Honor. Congratulations to several groups this past weekend. There were several events. There were big successes all around the area. The Beer Fest, for example, was a huge success. Congratulations to the Brewers Guild. And I'm glad to note that there were no ridiculous allegations of alleged inebriated behavior like there were two years ago that were proven unfounded. The Beer Fest was wonderful. So congratulations again. Glad everybody had a great weekend, and this weekend also proves to be pretty warm. So it should be a nice weekend as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner... Mayor Protem Stonehouse.
Just a couple of quick things. When the city manager talks about the fireworks ordinance or where we think we're going with it, if you can spend a little time, I think, on Bow Leg D, safety, which I think is the one that would address the concerns that the audience members spoke to. This certainly has attracted our attention. We committed that we would get one out of here, and I think we're meeting that commitment. Again, we'll see with the ordinance if we need to tune it up any closer than that or where we truly stand with it. But it is coming. We do listen. I do appreciate the comments from Margaret Brum regarding the water situation and the rate increases that are unfortunately necessary. You know, we will have public comment on that again. We will go through the reading of the ordinance yet, so there will be certainly full opportunity for additional public vetting on it. Nobody wants to raise taxes in any way. I mean, it truly affects all of us, and that's not something that you do lightly. But for the reasons certainly that Margaret Brum spoke to about it and we all spoke to during our last work session on it, it's critical, and it has to happen. And nobody likes to use the word Flint. And I'm not suggesting that we're anywhere close to that, but indeed, we do have an infrastructure that is old, that we continually work on, we continually replace, because like the old ad for Fram mufflers, pay me now or pay me later. And it's certainly better to solve the problems before they become catastrophic. And that costs money. And the more we save, the greater the cost of each gallon of water increases because we're using less of it, and the cost to produce it certainly either remains constant or continues to grow just based on inflation. So it is very difficult. I will say that we do not pass a five-year plan. We don't set those rates five years in advance. They would be done one year at a time. So you would be able to look at them closely and see, can we change that? Should we alter it? Are we getting to where we want to get to? Can we tune this as we move along? But regrettably, it's something that we certainly have to do. And we... I'm sure we will have a lot of conversation on it before we get to that point. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I have no comments tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Fraser?
There were comments from the crowd. The one person commented about Mr. Plord offending him. If I'm correct, the person that commented about that has been after many commissioners for many years and has been over former mayors many times. So Mr. Plord is the first one that stepped up, like, to say... that defended himself and didn't like the way the person was acted. But that's their own little deal, and I'm not going to go into that particular time. But in that, great events over the city, and the Brew Fest went over good, and there was a fishing tournament the next day for the veterans. I think everything went good. And what I'm going to say is, go pack, go.
Commissioner Schlegel?
School is back in session. Please watch out for all the kids in the mornings, especially now that I've got one back in high school again. It's been a few years. I can't believe how early they start. Holy cow. It is dark, dark when they're heading out to the buses. And please be aware and look out for those little pumpkins running around out there. Very important. I... forgive me, I didn't catch your name bringing up the lifesaving out at Presque Isle.
Oh, Barb.
Barb, thank you for bringing that up, Barb. That was Shawn Robinson Zobek. I have the hardest time... How do you pronounce it?
Soapcheck.
Soapcheck? Okay. Shawn is not only a great member of the community, she's the head coach for the Killer Whale Swim Team. She's been at the YMCA, teaching kids to swim and teaching lifesaving for years. She is an absolute great asset to the community. I just love her to death. The point that you made was very, very pertinent, obviously. You know, the... I think the old saying is reach, throw, row, go. If you ever took a lifesaving class, and we don't have any devices out there, so... and she admitted to her fault that she shouldn't have immediately jumped in, but that's what she does. And she put her life at risk knowingly, and I think that she needs to be rewarded for her bravery. At the same time, I hope that, you know, we now take a Parks and Rec or a city police department or Coast Guard, look at what's out there, and maybe we can hang some rings or get something out there so that there will be devices if ever needed again. Hopefully not. But thanks for bringing that up tonight. I really appreciate it. The Veterans Fishing Tournament, thanks for bringing that up, Pete. An amazing event each season. I'd love to see the posts on social media of the veterans out with the people are so generous to volunteer their time and energy in their vessels. It's an honor. I would be honored to partake if anybody needs a deckhand next season. I'd be happy to do that with them. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of dates. This Wednesday is a household hazardous waste drop-off at South McClellan site. So for those unusual and dangerous products in your house, it's a chance to get rid of them. I believe it's from 3:00 to 7:00. This Friday, city taxes are due. We appreciate you pay them. More so, the CFO. Yeah, sorry. In regards to the lifesaving effort, yeah, when I read that, I was impressed. Lisa luckily was on the spot there, and to be... she should be commended for what she did. Did I say Lisa? I meant Shawn. I'm sorry. Shawn, thank you. The kid who jumped in, yeah, he couldn't swim, and he didn't realize how cold the water is. You know, Lake Superior, you only got five or 10 minutes when you're in it. So Marquette has done a wonderful, great job of informing people of the dangers of the beaches here. Northern does a good job, I think, in their orientation. But, you know, not everybody gets it. Kids are stupid. We were all stupid. And it... so it's important to keep hammering home the fact that you have to be careful in Lake Superior. So Lisa, I'm sure the fire department may look into this and maybe do something for her. The fireworks, the city manager will talk about the fireworks. We've looked at it. It will be more restrictive to your advantage if we pass it. And lastly, we have one person in this audience who has doing negative comments on Commissioner Plord and perhaps, you know, others who are running for elective office. And I get tired of hearing that because I know how hard it is to run for elective office and the effort that you put out to run and put your face out there and to commit to this. And I commend anybody who's run, and even if they don't make it past the primary, if they even try to run, and especially those who are still running, they are to be commended. They're doing this to help the community. And to have somebody step up and say that they hope they don't do well really infuriates me, especially when they haven't done it themselves. He hasn't served on a committee. He's never run for public office, and he's saying that Commissioner Plord isn't doing well. It really grinds me, if you want to know. Thank you, Commissioner... our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of points, and I'll defer to the city attorney regarding the fireworks ordinance. My open office hours this week are this week, Wednesday, 10:00 a.m. at the Peterway Public Library. Regarding the lifesaving, I've asked the fire department along with the police department to investigate that and make a recommendation to me. Unfortunately, we can't just issue a ward based on a newspaper article. We need some kind of official documentation. So they'll be looking into that. With regard to the water rates, just a friendly reminder or to get it out there early that the budget will be coming in front of the commission for approval at the next meeting, 9/24. And the public hearing for the water and sewer rates will be noted or introduced at that meeting, with the public hearing actually occurring on the 9th of October. And with that, I will turn over the firework conversation to the city attorney.
Thank you. Your Honor, to respond first to the gentleman who asked about where the code was, the current code is on our website under municipal code ordinances. You can find it there. What we did for this meeting is we, along with the agenda, we attached the original current fireworks act along with the proposed revisions, and we highlighted those in yellow. So you should be able to find it pretty easily if you have, and this is also made available to the public, the agenda. So we have all that out there. But going specifically to the question that was raised earlier about the permissible locations, we spent quite a bit of time on this section. And what we tried to do was track the statute, the state law, so that if it were challenged, it would be upheld. So that is the language we came up with. It does comply with what the state allows. We could certainly change it, but I think if we're going to change it... I didn't want to be the first to do that because this complies with state law, and that's my obligation. If you want to change something and add to it that may be challenged, they will see how it goes the first time it's challenged. And I'm not saying we can't do that. I'm just saying this first draft really complies with what the law provides under the State Fireworks Act. It does talk about a person not igniting, discharging, or using consumer fireworks on public property, school property, church property, or the property of another person without permission. We think that covers the situation, but I understand the person who spoke at public comment, if it said "onto" the property of another person, then it probably would be clear. But again, this is what the state law provided, and that's why we wrote it. If the commission would like to see something a little different, we can certainly tweak that language.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse would like to add something?
If I can just clarify or ask you to clarify something. I'm reading paragraph six, safety. No person shall recklessly endanger the life, health, or safety or well-being of any person by the ignition, discharge, or use of consumer fireworks. If the debris for that is falling on somebody else's property or roof or structure, would that not recklessly endanger?
We would certainly charge under that. We would cite under that provision as well as G. We would also... there are some common law, you might say provisions. You can't trespass on another's neighbor's property. So there are other supposed ways to approach it, but I think D would apply. I think G applies as well.
Okay.
I guess we could always try it and see what happens. If it doesn't make it through the courts, then we can do something different, or we can do something now and see how it holds up. But I agree with you. I think D, safety, would apply as well as G.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Seeing no further comment, we are adjourned.